We're very lucky to have you all here today. We understand that you are here advocating for Ukraine at this very critical moment, and you just returned from meetings at Parliament. And it's actually really poignant that we're having this panel in Paris today, because we are in the George Marshall Center, and it is a very stark reminder that 75 years after the Marshall Plan, here we are, once again advocating and rallying support for another victim of foreign aggression. So, thank you for being here. Now, the way this panel will work is we will have a 40-minute panel, followed by breakout rooms. Each one of our panelists will join a breakout room, and you can join the breakout room with them for a more in-depth discussion. Please leave your microphones on mute in the meantime. This session is completely on the record. And if you have any further press inquiries, please note the email address in your invitation. And now, let's get started. So Hannah, if you don't mind, let's start with something that is on everyone's mind right now, which is: how is the situation in Ukraine?
The fighting spirit of Ukrainian people and Ukrainian armed forces are very high, and Ukrainians, 96%, believe that we are winning and we will win the war. And almost more than 90% of the population thinks that we have to restore the territorial integrity and sovereignty of Ukraine in the internationally recognized borders 1991. So, this is the spirit. And of course, I'm very thankful to Ukrainian armed forces, because we are now here in Paris, another delegation in Brussels, in Washington. So, we are advocating to have more weapons, tougher sanctions, and international tribunal documentation and all the process. So, but I think we have also mentioned that our Western allies, from Rammstein Coalition also, they are bringing even more hope that victory of Ukraine will come faster. So, a situation in Ukraine also with almost 10 millions of IDPs demands us to receive more financial support to secure payments for armed forces and also for all social needs. And let me also express our gratitude that Ukrainians, which are now abroad, that their hospitality of all nations are really so high. And here in France, during our meetings in Senate, in the Parliament of France, almost everyone mentioned that in their region, they have Ukrainians, and even Ukrainians in their home, the same, we just came from Poland, and we are also very thankful to Poland for hospitality. And all our Ukrainians which are abroad, they are now learning a great experience, and it's another way of integration, because we are here to advocate for the candidate status. And we do hope that in June, Ukraine will receive candidate status in the EU. And this will be another, not just symbolic, but it's also another step forward towards a eurointegration of Ukraine, because we submitted all a questionnaire and we met all criteria.
Great, thank you. I can say that we're all hoping that things go well for you, and we're all so impressed with how Ukraine has been defending its territorial integrity. And it's interesting, there was a lot of speculation around Vladimir Putin's big Victory Day speech on Monday. And there was a lot of talk afterwards about it being almost anticlimactic. A lot of people were speculating about things that would be announced or big things that would happen. What is your, what are your thoughts on that, Hannah? How do you interpret that speech?
So, Ukraine defeating Russia, it's a powerful signal to the world authoritarianism. And it's a powerful signal to China, and also it's a powerful signal to nations which are fighting for freedom. And I think Ukraine defeating Russia is also a powerful message to Moldova, because it's a unique chance for them also to restore their territorial integrity and sovereignty. And we know about these destabilization activities which are now Putin is trying to organize. And it's also Ukraine defeating Russia, it's a message to Belarusian people, which are suffering from Lukashenko regime. And also, I would say that Putin knows that his full-scale escalation against Ukraine weakened Russia. And also, one day, he will be together with his regime under the International Tribunal. And I think Russian armed forces are very demoralized. Their losses are very high. And I think he was very weak, and even the absence of the General Herasimo is another signal that Russians' idea to return Ukraine back to the Russian sphere of influence failed. And I think it's, we are living in the historical times when, because it's for last 300, or 300 years or 3 centuries, we've seen Russian aggressive behavior from Moscow via Soviet Union and now Russian Federation. So, I think we should start, continue economic pressure, which includes oil embargo. And also, here in Paris, we discussed how to meet and propose FATH to include Russia in the blacklist. And because also how to impose tougher sanctions on Russian military industry. And we are thankful to the EU for sanctions against Kirill, because he doesn't represent a religious organization. He's a part of KGB style, and he supported this Russian war, which turned into the war crimes, atrocities, and actually, let's be honest, genocide. So, I think it's really important to understand that it's the beginning of end of Putin regimes. But the question is, what to do with the imperialistic nature of Russian statehood and the Russian society which supported this aggressive war? And I think victory of Ukraine is also important that never again totalitarian regimes in 24th century would never happen. So, it's not just about Ukraine restoring internationally recognized borders. It's spiritual victory, because it's about civilizational war. It's about values that Ukrainian armed forces, but de facto, truly European armed forces, defending values, dignity, and stopping Russians that devastation is not going beyond the Ukrainian borders.
Yeah. And speaking of Russian expansionism and Ukrainian borders, Leo, do you have anything to say from the Moldovan perspective?
Well, all the countries are concerned certainly that Russia's appetite goes far beyond Ukrainian borders these days. And I think the best we could do is to mobilize an international effort, an international response to Putin's invasion in Ukraine and in Eastern Europe. That's what we do, and we've seen that there are signs of hope, basically, that this is happening right now. We see that Ukraine is armed, because a democracy should be armed in order to defend its freedom. And we have a situation when, you know, Ukraine and some other countries may still lose, but Russia cannot win anymore. Because the red lines which Putin crossed in Ukraine, I think are not tolerable by anyone who could even think to accept what Putin does in Ukraine. So, I think we are in the moment when we have to address all of these issues and think about how Ukrainian victory can change forever the region we are part of. We are in such a symbolic place today where the Marshall, basically, Marshall Plan for Europe was signed. And we are thinking that this is the right direction to think about with Ukraine and Eastern Europe as well. And the mobilizing factor, the mobilizing tool for this would certainly be the candidate status, EU candidate status for Ukraine, which offers all the ingredients for Ukraine to become a reformed country above all, but also to lead a thorough process of reconstruction after the war and modernize Ukraine. And these are all things which we will have to deal with in the coming years, I would say. But I strongly feel that we are on this path now, on the path of success. And of course, we don't have to relax, because we see that Putin did not yet acknowledge that his aggression in Ukraine is a failure. But this is, this is coming, I think.
Great, thank you. And Helena, one of the things that people say, you know, as a reason that Ukraine shouldn't join the EU is that, "Oh, it's a corrupt country." You know, and there's this, there's this image of corruption in Ukraine. And how would you respond to that?
Well, to start with, Ukraine is now paving its way to become zero-corruption country. And for the last eight years, we've made gigantic steps towards that goal. And well, I can tell you that, in fact, our success in anti-corruption and judicial reforms is one of the main reasons Russia attacked Ukraine. Vladimir Putin is not even hiding that he cannot bear the idea of successful reforms in Ukraine, of Ukraine becoming free, truly independent and democratic country. In his address to Russian people on February 20, Vladimir Putin specifically mentioned Ukrainian judicial reform, Ukrainian anti-corruption reform as a reason why Russia is attacking Ukraine. Vladimir Putin mentioned that Ukraine is now reforming the High Council of Justice and High Qualification Commission of Judges. I am sure that many of those who are listening to us now will find these, names of these institutions like very complicated. And even many of Ukrainians cannot tell you that, "Well, we have Qualification Commission of Judges in Ukraine, we have High Council of Justice." But Vladimir Putin mentioned that. He knows all these details. And well, this is one of the main reasons Russia is attacking Ukraine. And well, speaking about reforms in Ukraine, what we did and what we are doing right now, as I've said, huge steps. With regards to anti-corruption, we managed to establish independent anti-corruption chain, independent institutions, which are now effectively tackling corruption in Ukraine. First of all, we established independent anti-corruption bureau, which is investigating high-profile corruption cases. We have independent separate prosecutor's office working with NABU on investigating that cases and prosecuting that cases. And finally, in 2019, we established independent high-anti-corruption court. We involved international experts to ensure that those judges who come to work in that court meet the highest integrity criteria. And in three years, I can tell you that, well, that reform is successful, because something that imaginable eight years ago is happening in Ukraine now, when top officials are sentenced and they are now in prison for bribes they take before. And my final point, I want to stress that for Ukraine now, the most important is judicial reform. And even despite the fact that we are at war, we are keep implementing judicial reforms, ensuring that Ukrainian judiciary is truly independent and composed of honest, independent judges. So, about the image of Ukraine as a corrupt country, I believe that many Ukrainian officials in the past helped to create that image that Ukraine is corrupt. But please, stop associate Ukraine with those politicians, with those officials, and with those oligarchs. For the last decade, Ukraine introduced dozens of young reformers who work for the government of Ukraine, who work for the Parliament of Ukraine. And Hannah is a bright example here. She, for five years, she has been chairing the Committee on Foreign Affairs of the Parliament of Ukraine. She is like representative of these young leaders. So, please associate Ukraine with people like Hannah, reformers that are now working hard to make Ukraine truly democratic country.
And may I just to add? Because I think it's really important, because mentioning Ukrainian oligarchs. But there is one oligarch which for eight years is sitting in Vienna, Mr. Firtash, with contacts with Kremlin and with energy-gas business. So, for us, reform-minded people, it is really very strange to see some demands to Ukraine to reform our system. But then, within eight years, the US could not extradite this oligarch to the US and actually, after all investigations. So, I think we have, and like Nord Stream 2, it's also a project about strategic corruption. And this was an invitation for full-scale war. But shredderization of Europe, it's also very negative consequences of the morality and the values-based European continent. So, I think the full-scale war in Ukraine, it's also a time for revision of all approaches and oligarchs like Firtash and others, and many other Russian oligarchs. We are in France, and during one of our meeting, we discussed that there are 80 billions of US dollars freeze assets of Russian oligarchs, and even Putin here. So, we want to use this money after sanctions and then confiscation, this money for rebuilding Ukraine's economy. And also, we know in US Congress, there are other legislative initiatives. Because rebuilding Ukraine is now hard to say, because the damages are so high, the critical infrastructure destroyed, the GDP goes down. But Russians cannot kill Ukrainian dream. They could destroy the biggest cargo airplane, the only in the world. Ukraine dream on 2025. You know about this, because we supported NATO during COVID times. So, Ukraine contributed a lot to European security, contributed to COVID pandemic, how to go through this. And now, I think when the dream, the cargo airplane was destroyed, but Ukrainians, almost everyone say like, but our dreams to see Ukraine as a leader in the region with well-functioning, strong institutions, with rule of law, with dignity society, with one of the strongest armed forces at the continent. And what we expect, and thanks for conducting this discussion in this place, because we already in Ukraine started preparing Ukraine's plan for victory or recovery plan, Marshall plan. So, but it's not just about building back better. It's not about rebuilding damaged buildings. Oh, no, it's about bringing this spirit of democracy, dignity in each town. And let's also mention about Ukraine as a breadbasket of Europe, because one of our mission here in Brussels and other capitals to receive more political readiness of Western countries to unblock Ukrainian ports in Odessa, in Mykolaiv, and to allow Ukraine to export agriculture products, wheat, corns, and to feed the world. You know, in last century, Stalin organized man-made famine, holodomor genocide. And now Putin, through the full-scale escalation, is unblocking Ukrainian ports, stealing Ukrainian wheat, John Deere's. So, he's also created a global hunger threat for countries in North Africa and Middle East, in Asia. And I think it's really important now to unblock the Black Sea, to conduct the mining with UK, US, France, and countries from the Black Sea region, Romania, Turkey. And we cannot allow Putin to make Black Sea as a Russian-controlled lake, never. Like, remember last year, the UK Navy Defender? How they defend the freedom of navigation? So, now, this exercise in international waters in the Black Sea and Ukrainian territorial waters should be repeated. Because it's not just about protecting Ukraine from the Black Sea. It's about providing the world with agriculture products. And I visited just three weeks ago in Ukraine, my village where I was born, Hanachivka, 40 kilometers from Lviv, and then Kiev. And I made several statements like, "When Ukrainians, the bravest army in the world, defending freedom and democracy, we should take everyone in Ukraine's space and every inch of Ukraine land should be with seeds, because we have to predict and to be prepared for winter season, to protect critical infrastructure projects, also to think about fuels, also with gas and energy supply to build an interconnector with Poland, and heating seasons, and of course, to have products that IDPs and others will have enough food. And never again, holodomor or hunger happens in Ukraine and also in the world."
Yeah, it's a very important point. And I think that a lot of people around the world are very concerned about global food security right now. And I am curious, does that mean that Ukraine has been able to continue producing? Have they been able to plant their crops, or your crops?
Of course, the planting season is at risk in the territories which are in southern of Ukraine and occupied by Russians. And they are deliberately mining them, rockets attack. But in other parts of territories, Ukraine is one of the biggest countries with arable...
Land.
Yes, land. And we are continuing, and it's already, the planting season is progressing. But of course, even to export through the railway stations, it's only 20%. So, we have to think about different business. And thanks to the EU for lifting these quotas and tariffs.
Export quotas.
Export, yes. For one year, but I think it's another step after the candidate status, we also need to have access to the EU market, that Ukrainian products, and to support. And when we are talking about humanitarian aid, I think it's also important through USAID, JICA, different EU institutions to help Ukrainians to create jobs opportunity. Because we are hard-working nation, and we don't just need to receive money to survive. We want to contribute to Ukraine's economy and to help the state to win this war. And then, our armed forces is fighting in the east. And all our hearts and minds when we are in different capitals, but there with people who are in Ukraine, and especially in Mariupol, the true defenders. And evacuation of wounded civilians, we are very thankful. But we have also to remember about true defenders, because it's a military elite of Ukraine. And they just demonstrated that Ukraine will never surrender and we are winning this war and will win.
Great. And Leo, to come back to a point that you made earlier, now that we've heard about these anti-corruption measures, is Ukraine really ready to join the EU?
Well, Ukraine is ready to receive the candidate status. Yeah, joining EU is a perspective. And we need to make sure that we have first the candidate status, because this means basically a green light for Ukraine return to Europe. Yeah, this is what we need now. And certainly, Ukraine has much work to do. I mean, we are realist about this perspective. Ukraine is ready to receive the candidate status, and Ukraine is ready to implement all the reforms which would lead to the membership of Ukraine in the European Union. And this is much more important than when one might think about this, because, you know, EU was born here because of visionary people such like Schuman and Monet. And then, we had Delors, who invented this economic integration and so on and so on. It was born as a project that is aimed to make conflict and war unthinkable. By Ukrainian bid to enter in the EU, we don't see only economic integration and development of Ukraine, post-war reconstruction, reforms and so on. But we also see as a way to make conflict unthinkable in Ukraine. Because if Ukraine does not receive candidate status, if Ukraine is not back in Europe, is back in the, is not integrated in the European Union, then Putin might think in five years, in 10 years, or someone else, we don't know who is going to be there, someone else might attack Ukraine again. And being part of the EU makes these things highly unlikely to happen.
Yeah. And Helena, to return to what you were saying about anti-corruption measures in Ukraine, where do you think this impression of Ukraine came from? This impression of it as a corrupt country?
Well, first of all, from our former politicians, well, these Soviet-style politicians, you know. In like 10 years ago, there were a lot of MPs in the parliament who were working during Soviet times. And in fact, one of the biggest failures of Ukraine after the collapse of the Soviet Union is that we have not, we had not conducted decriminalization at that time as Lithuania and Latvia did. But the Parliament of Ukraine right now is different. There are a lot of new, young faces, people genuinely willing to make reforms. And second of all, I believe that while Russia also invested a lot in creating this image of Ukraine as a failed state, we see now, we are facing the results of Russian propagandist machine been working for the last years, not only in Russia, not only in Ukraine, but also in the Western countries. A lot of Russian money were invested in sharing these narratives as Ukraine is a corrupt country, is a failed state. So, the EU should not consider the issue of supporting Ukrainian membership in the EU because of all the problems, because of the corruption. And so, the EU should not support Ukraine. The US should not support Ukraine because of that. And well, to some extent, we can think now that, well, all the efforts were effective. So, again, I'm calling everyone, please do not associate Ukraine with oligarchs, with corrupt politicians, because we really have done a lot. We established independent anti-corruption institutions that are really working. We now implementing judicial reform. And importantly, Ukraine has invented unique solutions in terms of anti-corruption, in terms of judicial reform. Because while Ukraine as other countries in Eastern Europe are transitional democracies, meaning that those solutions that have worked for Western European countries, they do not work in Ukraine because of our Soviet heritage, because of corruption, because of poor ethics of many officials of Ukraine. So, we invented unique solutions, which is establishing independent institutions with the involvement of both civil society and international experts. And we now see that other countries in the region are following Ukrainian experience. I am surprised to learn that Moldova is now launching judicial reform following Ukrainian model. And I know from the colleagues from Georgia that they would love to make judicial reform following Ukrainian model in Georgia. Unfortunately, there is no like political support to that. But I'm trying to say that, well, Ukraine is already showing that it is a country, it is a leader in the region.
Trendsetter.
Yeah, it is a trendsetter. We come up with unique solutions. We ensure that they are effective and we help other countries to reform.
And is it that leadership and anti-corruption efforts in reform that led to this invasion? I mean, is that, do you think that that is what turned Putin's eye towards Ukraine?
Of course, well, this is one of the main reasons. It's just Russia cannot allow Ukraine have independent judiciary. Russia cannot allow Ukraine defeat corruption within the country. Because that would mean that, while Russia won't be able to control Ukraine using dependent and corrupt judges, that will mean that, while Ukraine been able to defend the interest of its, both its citizens and foreign investors, that would lead to economical, economic prosperity of Ukraine. So this is something Russia cannot allow to happen. This is why they attacked Ukraine. And this is why we are keep continuing the reforms, because it is a matter of our future, of our security.
And when we see how Russia is moving from authoritarianist to totalitarianism, so successful example of Ukraine with strong institutions, with freedom of speech, with resilient civil society, and even the salaries in Ukraine is higher than in Russia. So then, one day, Russian citizens will start asking, huh, why do we need such leader, I would say? Which, when we are suffering, becoming more poor, and all resources are in the pockets of Russian oligarchs in France, in UK, in Austria, and other nations. So this is why the successful models in anti-corruption is existential threat for Putin's regime. And of course, this was why Putin mentioned National Anti-Corruption Bureau, Agency of Prevention Corruption. So it seems like they were monitoring all these years and knowing that, like Hala mentioned, Ukraine is moving to zero-corruption. There will be many efforts from civil society, from Ukrainian people. But definitely, knowing that there is less corruption in Ukraine, there is less opportunity for Putin to bribe people. And I think after victory and with the recovery plan as an instrument, also towards membership perspective, strengthening our institutions and reforms agenda, I think it's also important to have like this Marshall Plan for post-war Europe, like France, Germany, and other nations, to have middle class, which will be fighting with, at that time, communistic ideology. And also, I think in Ukraine, it's also to demonstrate this trendsetters' leadership for other countries which are suffering from authoritarian leaders, not just in European continent.
And I just want to make an important disclaimer. Well, I am representing one of the leading NGOs in Ukraine advocating for anti-corruption and judicial reforms. And in Ukraine, we are very well-known for our tough and sharp critics of the government. So when I'm saying that we are having progress with the reforms and we are very successful, I really mean that, because as a civil society, we put a lot of efforts to ensure that. Of course, this way, there were a lot of rollbacks, a lot of obstacles. And while it was not the easiest task to have this political consensus on the idea that we have to establish anti-corruption court, that we have to involve international experts in the process of assessing the integrity of members of Ukrainian judiciary, but we achieved that. So this is something I am, as Ukrainian, is proud of.
Thank you. Unfortunately, that's the time that we have left for the panel, but thank you so much. And all of the panelists will now be going to breakout rooms, where you can have, continue one-on-one conversations, ask all of the questions that you want directly. Everything remains on the record. So if you would look on your screen, there should be a little button where you can click and select a breakout room, and each room will be labeled with the panelist's names. You are also able to switch to different rooms if you would like to talk to multiple panelists.
But before, we would like to thank special gratitudes to the US role, and especially for landlords, and the Congress is adopting new legislation, will be bringing us more money, because democracy should be equipped with advanced NATO standards weapons.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.